If you wish to call in using your phone, the number is 888-475-4499. Once again, the meeting ID number is 824-9286-5649. This agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The chair's report this evening. I wish to congratulate everyone involved in the homecoming parade and game for a wonderful event. It was a beautiful day, but it's always a great day in Lunenburg when it's homecoming. Thank you all. I also want to thank the finance committee and Tracy Novick from MASC for a very informative session last Thursday night on Chapter 70 Funding. I'd like to thank Mrs. LeBlanc for an excellent presentation last night at the select boards meeting on the civics curriculum, civics projects, and civic involvement of our eighth grade and high school students. I also need to announce that our committee member, Seamus Kelly, has decided to resign his position. So we thank him for the time that he spent here with us, and we will be working on what we need to do to replace his position on the board. So with all that being said, there are no presentations this evening. Public comment is next on the agenda. I want to remind the public that the first public comment section is for agenda items only. The second public comment section is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. Our public comment section is 10 minutes with three minutes per person. So are there any public comments? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank Seamus Kelly for the time that he did serve, and I appreciated his opinions on a lot of matters. And I think it's so important for us to hear from a diverse population and have a full committee, so yeah, I want to thank him.
Thank you. Now we have to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from the regular sessions on October 6th and October 20th. So has everyone had a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
All right, then can I have, unless anyone has a problem with any of those minutes? Any questions? Then could I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 6th and October 20th.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And line item transfers. Mr. Cassidy, represent.
Good evening. Mike Cassidy, business manager. This evening, there is a $750 transfer from our facilities and grounds accounts. $750 moving from our supply account to the rubbish removal charge. The reason for the transfer is we did a major shredding project which went over budget, and to cover that anticipated cost or expense, we need to do the transfer. So that is what is in front of the school committee tonight for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the transfer? Then can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer as presented by Mr. Cassidy.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And superintendent's report. Dr. Burnham?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to make you aware that we were awarded an emergency connectivity funding grant in the amount of $140,000 and a little bit more. And that will be applied for purchase of some additional iPads. $123,000 of it will be to purchase additional Chromebooks, and we will also be purchasing a few laptops for position, new staff positions. On the grant front, we were awarded again this year, the after-school and out-of-school time grant, again in the amount of $24,000 as it was last year. This year, we're looking to change the model of the tutoring. You might recall with the ESAR survey that we conducted late last spring, parents actually indicated a preference for after-school tutoring over summer school programming. So taking that into consideration and some of the challenges we experienced with a four-week program in the summer, with some kiddos missing one of the four weeks to be on vacation, et cetera, et cetera, we thought that we would move this model to after-school. We would extend it to run for 20 weeks. The way we're, and the way we're looking to do that would be working with kiddos first grade through 12th grade. The last 10 of those 20 weeks, we would then include kindergarteners. Because you might remember that we don't assess with iReady the kindergarteners in the fall. Our first assessment with kindergarteners is in January. So at that point, we would better know which ones would be benefiting most from the program. So the program will again run for 20 weeks. It would be for invited students, those students in most need of some intervention. We would be including for K5, literacy tutoring on Mondays and Wednesdays, math tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and Fridays would be enrichment. The program for grades six through 12 will include academic support Monday through Thursday each week for an hour. And as far as staffing, there's a permission to post. You'll hear more about that. But we're looking to be very flexible with staff. Some may prefer to do only the literacy tutoring, others may just prefer the math or the enrichment or some combination of all three. The program we're looking to begin the week of November 29th, so after Thanksgiving, and run that through the week of May 23rd with weeks that are vacation weeks or with a holiday during the week. We would not be running the program those weeks. Relative to extended day, last meeting, we discussed some proposed changes for extended day programming. Mr. Cassidy, Mrs. Gillette, and I will be hosting a Zoom forum for parents with students currently in grades K through four. We're not including the fifth grade because next year they wouldn't be eligible for the program. We, we plan to provide them a presentation of the proposed changes, an explanation and a reason for those proposed changes, and also address any questions or concerns that they may want to share with us. All of you are welcome to attend. We'll be sharing that Zoom link with you. On athletics, we did receive word today that the MIAA will be increasing their fees. Fees have not been raised since 2014. That means an impact of a $570 increase for Lunenburg. We also have some good news to share. Football, field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, boys cross-country, and girls cross-country have all qualified for the postseason. We're not sure in Lunenburg history how far we'd have to go back to have that many teams qualifying for postseason, so congratulations to all of our teams on their successful seasons. Football will be playing Friday at Wakana in the first round of the state tournament. Boys soccer will play tomorrow at home, 3:30 in the afternoon in their state tournament. Girls soccer will travel to West Bridgewater on Saturday for their first round. Field hockey's headed to Nantucket on Sunday for their first round. Boys and girls cross-country will be traveling to Westfield next Saturday for their state meet. So lots of traveling, lots of success this season, so again, kudos to all of the student athletes. I also wanted to mention Mrs. LeBlanc's presentation last night. I, I also felt it was very well received, and I, I couldn't be more thrilled to see one of our curriculum coordinators presenting on the great work that we're doing in the schools. So that was very exciting for me. Relative to professional development, yesterday was a full day of professional development. It was our third annual joint conference with North Middlesex Regional. Several of our staff were presenters yesterday. We did have a chance to speak with staff, and we also administered a survey to staff in order to gather feedback. The offerings were well received, and the teachers reported that the sessions were very useful. That, of course, is the goal. I would like to thank Annika Scott, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and the entire PD committee for the great work that they do to create these conference days for our staff every year. COVID updates. Cases, one so far this week. Again, I believe it was seven last week. The positivity rate for town is still a little bit high at 5.76%, whereas the state is at 1.73%. Not much change from the last time I reported. The test and stay, you'll hear more about that program as part of the ESAR update from Mr. Cassidy in a few moments. The vaccination rate overall for the town, 72% of the residents are vaccinated. Not much change as far as student vaccinations. The middle school is at 42%, but that's up 1% from the last time I reported. And the high school is still unchanged with 76%. Dashboard and town, the town numbers are on our dashboard, our numbers are on our dashboard, and they're holding pretty consistent week to week. A few reminders, because November is a very busy month. On the 8th, Turkey Hill will host its evening parent conferences. There's also a PTO meeting that evening, which will be held at the middle high school at 7:00 PM. On the 9th, Turkey Hill will have its early release day for parent conferences. On the 10th, the primary school will hold their evening parent conferences. November 11th, Veterans Day holiday, no school. On the 12th, the primary school will have its early release day for parent conferences. Of course, the special town meeting is on November 16th, 7:00 PM at the middle high school auditorium. And our next school committee meeting is on the 17th. That will be via Zoom at 7:00 PM. And I have some very exciting news. After checking in with the local Board of Health, the annual tree lighting is coming back, so we will be hosting the annual tree lighting on the Lower Common at the gazebo on December 2nd. Nice to have a little bit of normalcy coming back in to our world. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Burnham? All right, then we have our student representative, Shandalini.
Thank you. I'll start with the high school notes. The homecoming parade on October 23rd was a great success. The competition was tough, but the juniors ended up winning with their float based on SpongeBob, and the sophomores came in second with their recreation of Scooby Doo. Between the parade and the big game, a tour of the school directed by members of the student council was given to alumni. Along with homecoming, the high school students showed their school spirit by participating in Spirit Week. The days were Sports Day, Anything But a Backpack Day, Celebrity Day, Hawaiian Day, and Class Shirts Day. The senior class, led by Molly Belaza, pulled together an amazing rally at the last minute, which was very much appreciated by the students. And next is the middle school notes. Makeup Day for school pictures is on November 9th. The Lunenburg PTO is bringing back their cookie dough fundraiser, ordering ends by November 8th. World Hunger Task Force from the high school is holding, holding a food drive for the Lunenburg Turkey Hill Lions Club. And lastly is the elementary school. Turkey Hill is holding an online book fair for its students, and it runs from October 25th to November 5th. And parent teacher conference, parent conferences are held on November 8th and 9th.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. So now we're on to new business, and we have dyslexia guidance overview.
And I would invite our Director of Special Services, Mrs. Hanscom, to provide this presentation for you.
Good evening, Mrs. Hanscom.
Yep. You just let me know when you want me to change the screen.
So back in 2019, Mass General Laws went into effect that required DESI to issue guidelines to assist districts in developing screening procedures for dyslexia. The guidelines do serve three purposes. Providing a set of screening guidelines for all students, providing a framework for intervention for students at risk of dyslexia, and also to provide comprehensive resource of evidence-based practices to support students at risk of dyslexia, so that we're actually working on evidence-based, research-based materials that, that have proven effective with students. And throughout this presentation, I know each of you got it, it was dropped in the box, so that the blue areas are links to, so the actual guidelines, if you click on where the blue guidelines, it will say, it's like, it's an 81-page document. It's very, very detailed. So it's really great. I know that DESI, I believe one of, one of my staff members is starting to take a class through the MTA on actually just diving into this set of doc, this, this one document. So they really are being thoughtful in trying to make sure that as many people get on board with it and understand it as possible. So DESI hopes that the guidelines will bridge a gap between research and practice and resulting in a positive impact for the children of Massachusetts for years to come. But it is important to note that although I am up here and I am the Director of Special Services, this is a regular ed initiative. And I think if Rebecca Hyde was still here, I think she would be the one giving you this presentation. We have been very, very fortunate through Kate's hire of her to have her come on board because she really has gotten Lunenburg ahead of the game on this. Even though, and it's going to come down here, I'll go for, oh, there's not even currently an approved dyslexia screener through the state. But there is a list of approved, early literacy approved screening tools. And Rebecca went and did her research, and we've met together with her and Annika, and she chose, well, the team ended up choosing iReady, so we're ahead of it, and it's one of the approved screeners. And then iReady actually has its own dyslexia component that we purchased, and so we have that too. So we're ahead of the game on that regard. We're also ahead of the game, I think, as far as the screening has already been in place. It started last year, and it's continuing this year. So the other part on this slide that shows is DESI did put out additional supports that can be found by the Mass Literacy Guide. It's for pre-K through third grade on that. And then currently in Lunenburg, we use iReady for grades K through eight. So we've even gone above and beyond what the state has asked for us on the dyslexia guidelines. And we're doing K through eight for iReady to be able to really benchmark those kids three times a year and see where they fall, and then have those data teams to really be able to see who's falling at the middle, low, and high end, and to be able to provide those MTSS supports for students. So these guidelines, that 81-page that I talked about, it's only intended to be a living, it's intended to be a living and evolving document, so I'm guessing that there's going to be edits made along the way with it, which is nice because that encourages teachers really upfront to see it as a useful tool for them in their practice and for districts to be able to pull what they need from. This presentation that I give tonight is only, it's the very tip of the iceberg. There's really, this document goes into great detail even with how to help serve EL students and their families and through screeners on that. It really dives down into practices and instructional techniques and that type of thing too, so it really does break it down. But the, the important thing is to know that it, it is intended to be a living, evolving document. So this is the definition for dyslexia. I am not going to read it to you. And if you are like me, you will get like three lines down, and you might start to glaze over a little bit, and that's okay, okay? Because it's meant, you, you've really got to take the time to be able to digest it. What is basically saying is that dyslexia, it is a specific learning disability, but the, the thing is, is it's, it's found to be neurological, neurobiological in origin, okay? And that means that even before kids start formally learning how to read or being taught to learn how to read, we can already pick up on some markers with the right assessments, screeners, and maybe probes that teachers might do to be able to see those kids that might be at higher risk of this, okay? And that's really important, and we'll, I'll get on that, I'll dive into that a little bit deeper in the next couple of slides. This is where it breaks down for the reading dyslexia piece. So you can see that they fall into a couple of different categories. You've got the phonological subtype, whereas for students that we find that are below average in those areas, phonemic awareness, decoding accuracy, sight word accuracy, passage accuracy, or the naming speed subtypes, where they might be below average in rapid automatized naming, decoding efficiency, and passage fluency. Those students may fall under the umbrella of dyslexia, or we may want to look at them more closely and give other assessments to see if it's consistent across. But then there's also the double deficit, where some students fall into both, all right? And, and you can see down at the bottom, this is from 1999. That's because we now have, and it's going to be on this next slide here. We've got 25 years of substantial data that the notion that students with dyslexia have unique neurological profiles. So we've known it for a while. It's just been getting there and getting everybody up to speed, right? Because old practices die hard, and old thought processes die hard, right? So some misconceptions about dyslexia, it's not just those kids that have the reversals of letters. It's not a visual issue. It's not associated with a lack of intelligence. Some readers might be immature, people will say, and that causes it. That doesn't cause it either. Reading will improve if students are motivated. Wouldn't that be great? But that's not a cause of dyslexia. And the other one that, that comes out of this documentation, and also comes from the federal level too, is that no longer can schools say that dyslexia can only be diagnosed medically. We now in school districts have the ability to be able to make that diagnosis based on the testing, based on other, the data, other data that we've collected. Now I say that, that doesn't mean that I'm telling all of my teams to rush right out and diagnose every kid that you think. It's going to be a process of how we get staffing that's been doing the testing all along and get them trained to be comfortable to make that kind of assumption, or make that kind of diagnosis, because it's a heavy diagnosis. And we don't want to, I don't want to take it lightly, and I don't want my staff to be taking it lightly. But we do need to recognize that we need to move in that direction to be able to get the professional development in place so that everybody is comfortable with that. I think right now, what I've talked to my teachers about over the years, and I will continue to say it, is what do students need to succeed? Let's not look at the testing in some cases, right? Let's not focus on that. Let's not focus on how much more testing we can do for a student, but what are we finding that works? What works? What have we done? What haven't we done? What can we put in place? What do we maybe need to tweak? Those are the things, those are the conversations that I still keep having with my staff. So we went over this side, and then the await, the nice thing about this framework and the, the guidance is that it, it avoids the wait-to-fail framework, okay? No longer do we have to wait for students to fail, fall behind, get further enough behind, go through a child study team or a teacher support team process, and then evaluate for special ed in order to pick students up. We can now start looking through these screenings, and again, it's going to start in kindergarten, to see if those students have markers, or whether it's even dyslexia that might be marking up. Which students are falling behind just for whatever reason they might be falling behind or have gaps? The screening is for risk, is critical for effective intervention, and like I said, in Lunenburg, we currently do it kindergarten through grade two for last year, but this year we're including grade three in that. And screening does not mean it's an eligibility determination, so it's not automatically, if you score in the lower percentile, you're automatically in special ed. You still have to go through that process of eligibility. But again, it just gives us that chance to be able to do that tier-two intervention work or even tier-three intervention work, so that the students that aren't maybe getting the same progress with whole group instruction can have that before it needs to get to special ed. So it's really making it truly everyone's agenda to work with these students. Some people will say, isn't screening kindergarteners too aggressive? We hear that across the board, right? That sometimes we're putting too much on our youngest learners. However, the research is showing 100 targeted hours of intervention brings 50 to 94% of at-risk first graders into the average range. And the same impact isn't observed in third grade students, meaning if we gave those third grade students 100 hours, we're not going to see a 15 to 94, 94% average range for them, okay? The older they get, the more time we need to catch them up, so to speak. So that's why it's so important for us to start in kindergarten, do these screenings, see which students are maybe falling behind, and to start working on those MTSS strategies to get them caught up. There's also a preventive approach to reading failure interventions that are most effective between ages six and eight years old. And this is why it's so important again for MTSS to be in place in regular education classrooms rather than relying on special education to fix it later. This is what the, the framework looks like for MTSS and how we're, we're working on it in, in Lunenburg. So we have our beginning of the year benchmarks. We have data team meetings. We identify the at-risk students, the ones that get the tiered instruction. We have those groups split up. They may make, they may have those interventions last between eight and 10 weeks, and then they progress monitor again at tiers two and three, and as needed for tier one. And you can see across the way, and then they'll have their other, middle of the benchmark, middle of the year benchmark. They'll go through it again. They'll have their data team meetings. They'll do the interventions for a number of eight to 10 weeks, and then, and then they'll have an end of the year assessment. And it's a process. And then kids can move in and out of those groupings, which is nice too. The other thing, even though this is one about dyslexia and what the guidelines are for that, because we're doing this through K through eight, iReady doesn't focus on just reading and literacy, it also focuses on math too. So I think we're really getting a good bang for our buck with this program and that work. And with having Amy Reboin doing the math coaching, I think we're really getting ahead of the game with a lot of these students that might be, might have struggled in the past more so. So what are our next steps in Lunenburg? We're going to continue with PD for staff. At this point, some of our staff feel a little overwhelmed, I think, with some of the dyslexia stuff that I've sent their way, right? Because it's a lot of stuff. But we're going to continue to, to pound through it, to get through as much as we can, to find those little pockets, to capitalize on the moments where, for example, the one staff reached out to me and said, hey, I'm going to take this training. And I'm like, great, get back in touch with me, let me know what worked really well, let me know what we can share out at the staff meeting, and then hopefully get more people involved and excited about it. We're going to continue with MTSS for students and data teams. We're going to implement high-quality evidence-based practices and programs. For the last few years, every time a teacher's come to me and asked for something as far as curriculum for their classrooms, what I'll ask is I'll go back to Annika and I'll say, what are you guys using for your regular ed curriculum? Let's get something that, that collaborates with it and see if they have something for whatever that publisher might be that, that corresponds with a special ed or an MTSS model. And then if we have to go to a sub-separate, to a separate program, I'm looking to see if it's evidence-based, all right? And the state is getting better about giving us some ideas onto which programs they're endorsing, so to speak, although they don't highly endorse any one program in particular. They do, like they did for the screeners, they put ones out there that they said, hey, these could be good, and you might want to look close, more closely at them. They also gave a class last year that me and three other teachers went to, excuse me, where they did give us some more in-depth advice and support on which programs might be better for certain areas to help students and help teachers. And then the other, the last step that we're also doing that I wanted to highlight is kind of what Kate had talked about, is offering students additional supports before and after school programs. We had the Summer Academy this year, and I think those are really going to help because, like it said, to get all of those X- extra hours in, it needs to come from somewhere. And, and again, I don't want, what I don't want to happen is for these students who need this additional time for just, for it to have to be taken out of only enrichment time, other activities, preferred activity times. And I definitely don't want them to miss their core instruction because that's the whole tier-one approach, right? But it seems like if we can offer them these before-after-school programs, summer academy, we're going to be able to get in some more of those hours that are needed, okay, to help them. So again, this was a dyslexia guidance overview, but I kind of wanted to talk about, it's a big picture. It's part of a big picture, right? And if anybody has any more in-depth questions, I can definitely answer those for you, or if you want me to come back and give a specific topic more in-depth, I can do that, too. But I didn't, it can be very overwhelming, that whole document. It is very overwhelming, but it's packed with a lot of good stuff.
Thank you.
No problem.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Hanscom? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you going in depth with the PD for the staff. I think that's important in going over the details of how they're going to work with the students. I did have a question. I love the idea of how we, we just kind of keep adding tools to the basket of the teachers. I did have a question about, though, of new staff. As new staff comes in, how do we make sure that that PD is going to be incorporated into their basket after where, you know, we go through that curriculum, we go through that PD with the veteran staff? How did the new staff get that?
You know, it, even with veteran staff, they still need refreshers, right? Because a lot of times, you may forget about certain strategies that work well. So it's having that continuous loop of bringing those strategies back and talking about them again. And with programs, it's basically looking at, like I had looked at the last couple of years, we had some teachers trained in certain reading programs. And then I'm always looking every year, all right, which program should we look to train? Who should we look to get trained in in trying to build that base? So we do bring in new teachers along the way. Usually the first couple of years, especially if they're brandy-new teachers, we don't want to completely overwhelm them by throwing them into additional reading programs, math programs, and that type of thing. But it is something I know that Annika is working on, on trying to always circle back and make sure that we're reviewing and then giving new teachers some of the same information.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that. I think additionally, where this is a state initiative, prep programs, teacher prep programs are probably going to start to incorporate this more heavily. So teachers newly graduated from prep programs probably will have some of this background as well. Additionally, if we're bringing folks in from other districts, again, because this is a statewide initiative, they've probably had some training and exposure in the district that they're coming from, which is why it's not necessarily, you have no idea of what this is, we have to start from ground zero. That's why that loop of going back and revisiting is important, just to kind of bring everybody back to that center again.
And I think Desi's going to get to that point. They got to that point with our SEI, right? We had, we used to have the old, oh, I even forget the name of the old one, the old trainings that we had to take that were like four or five different categories, trainings for EL students. Do you remember that?
I do.
And I didn't like that one. But then they brought in SEI, and those courses were fantastic. And then they require teachers to get them over two years, and we did. And now they're doing it in undergraduate programs or graduate programs if people are going back to school to get their teaching. So they're coming to us already with that SEI work being done, to be able to help meet the needs of the diverse learners and the English language learners population. So I think Desi may get on board with the same thing for this dyslexia piece. At least I'm hopeful that they will. Because really, they need to get down to the college-level programs and the teacher-trained programs with some of this work.
Any other questions? I had one question about the eligibility for the after-school programming. I know you're using iReady as one of the benchmarks. What else are you using to determine eligibility?
So again, that's a regular ed initiative, so I'm not really sure exactly what Annika, I'm sure that they're going to be using other benchmarks from that, but I think iReady is going to give them a place to start, and then them working with the teachers. Am I correct in that, Kate, from our discussion?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing, we're working with a company, a consultant that does programming. So the niche area for this individual is to develop what I refer to as the master tracker. So it's a great big version, I guess, of something similar to an Excel spreadsheet where different assessment results can be uploaded so that teachers have access to their students and all of their longitudinal data. So things like MCAS results, iReady results, DRAs. If there have been academic referrals, if there have been special ed referrals, if there have been behavioral health attendance issues, we will be able to have all of that data eventually in one place. We're working to build it right now. So as much data as we can look at to make determinations about eligibility for kiddos, we will be looking at. And I just want to be clear, interventions are still going to be happening during the school day. This is not replacing that. This is more replacing the summer school model and moving it to a longer duration after Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Now we have the discussion about the town bylaws. I received an email from, I just want to pull it up in front of me here. I received an email from the town administrator asking that we take a look at the bylaws as they pertain to the school. I went through the bylaws. I saw two things about traffic in school zones. That's all I could find having to do with school. I don't know that we need more in the bylaw. I talked to a member of the bylaw committee, and he indicated he didn't think that we needed to invent bylaws, that we're just trying to make sure that any bylaws we have don't interfere or contradict what's in the charter. The charter is newly done. We can't change the charter. It is what it is. They're reviewing the bylaws at the moment. So what I did, or what I asked Liz to do, because I couldn't figure out how to do it, was to put the charter section for the school committee in a packet, and then for some reason, I left out the part about the budget. So you got a hard copy of that in front of you because I had no clue how to place it in this document. But that's all there is in the charter concerning the school committee. And then under bylaws, I just found school speed zones, and that was it. So what I'd like to do is I'd like us to each have a chance to look at the town bylaws and so that we have an idea of what's included. You can find those, I didn't attach those. You can find those on the Lunenburg Master.gov page. Under government, go all the way to the right, and you'll find charter and bylaws. And if everybody has a chance to take a look at that, for the next meeting, we can decide what we need to do. I mean, obviously, these speed zone things are not correct because it only involves one school. So that needs to be looked at, but I don't know if the police look at that, or if we look at that, or how that works. But if we take a look at the bylaws in general and just see if there's anything that we feel needs to be added in for our purposes, then I can get back to the committee and say we've looked at it. And that's the story, I guess. Any thoughts on that?
I guess my initial thought was the, for the school speed zones, the 332, 722, in accordance with Mass General Law, no operator shall run at a speed greater than 20 miles per hour. An established school zone is designated. Schedule seven of these traffic rules and orders? That seems fine. The next one with the Turkey Hill Elementary School information, I felt like that was unnecessary. And then your additional paper copy, the school committee budget.
That's the charter.
I feel like that's the process that we've been going through anyways, when we input it into the newspaper, in the local newspaper, and it's published, and we have those meetings. So I see no concern.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to eliminate that piece or add in the other schools. I don't, and I kind of think that's more the police than us, to be honest. But that's, that's what I found as far as in the bylaws regarding schools. So they asked us to look at it, and that's what there was.
Yeah, it would be good to get their opinion, get the police chief's opinion on that one.
So before the next meeting, I can contact the police department and just ask them what they think about this, if it needs to be in there, if the first one, school speed zones, is enough, or if this next one is necessary. And then when we come back in two weeks, we can talk about it and then decide what we're going to submit back to the bylaws committee. Mr. Shapiro?
Yeah, just really quick. So I'm reading through the budget piece, specifically the part where it says, the date, time, and place when a public hearing will be held by the school committee on the proposed budget. I don't know if I'm just forgetting, is that something that we normally do have, like a whole hearing, or is it normally just in public comment?
No, it's a hearing.
Okay.
It's definitely a public hearing that we set aside.
And it is published in the paper.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, well, that's what we'll do then. And then in two weeks, when we come back, we'll figure out what we're going to submit back to the bylaw committee. All right, thank you. So we have permission to post.
Hello again. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. In front of you tonight, there's a permission to post. It's for the after-school tutors, program coordinators, and site, a program manager and site managers. As Dr. Burnham mentioned, we were awarded a $24,000 grant. These are positions that were not anticipated. That's why it's coming in front of the committee. These are special monies that will go away, and so will the after-school program. I guess one thing that I didn't hear, but the program's supposed to start November 29th and go through May 23rd. And it's a balance of the after-school program and some ESTR funding as well, ESTR II funding that we had identified for this. So that is in front of the school committee for your consideration. I want to alert you that we did post it with the caveat in the heading, pending school committee approval, just so we could start recruiting applicants to the program.
Certainly. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Leighton?
So I think these positions are great, after-school tutors, program coordinator, there's great resources for our students. So I just want to have you clarify, so it does say that they're unfunded critical positions, but they are funded by grants? Is that correct?
100% grant-funded, by two separate grants. My feeling is we'll use the after-school program money first, because that's a close to deadline. I think that has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll get into the ESTR funds. The ESTR funds, if it's not spent, we can reallocate those funds later on. So it's the after-school program first, and then the ESTR funds.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, can I have a motion to allow the posting of these positions?
I'll make a motion to give permission to post the positions as outlined.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So then next is the annual SISA School Report.
The SISA School, a North Central Charter Essential School, is required by the state's regulatory requirements, 603 CMR 1.08, to provide a copy of their annual report to the superintendent and school committee chairs of the districts from which they draw students. You have before you a copy of the FY21 report, which has been approved by the state. So at this point, I would just recommend that you accept the report.
Does anyone have any questions about the SISA School Report? I was just wondering how many students we have at the SISA School?
So in total, we have 18. We have eight eighth graders, four ninth graders, three 10th graders, two 11th, and one 12th.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to accept this report?
I'll make a motion to accept the annual SISA School Report. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And it will be posted on the website as well.
So now we have a transportation discussion. Mr. Cassidy?
I'm Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. This is a brief update, so no reports. We are working on the survey for the parents. We're working on identifying the parents that we're going to be contacting. The survey is done. And I'll get back to the survey questions in a minute. So we started surveying other communities to see what they charge. So there was a, there was a group of, and I'm sure people are familiar with, we use this matrix for other things, districts with similar student populations, similar wealth, geographically close to Lunenburg. And then for this survey, we've looked at other districts that are served by DBUS. So, and I was hoping this information was going to be crystal clear. It's not. It's right down the middle. And I'm not presenting this information formally because we have to dig a little bit deeper. I was really hoping, well, I'll tell you what I was hoping in a minute. I'm sorry. So there was 19 districts we surveyed, all 19. We've heard back from 17, so we're still chasing two districts. 14 of those districts of the 17 transport all students. At some level. So, and that's, this is where the data really starts getting muddy. So they go beyond what is required by the state. So I need to break that down for the committee, just so. And then in addition, eight of those 14 charge unallowable students a fee. And right now, we're looking at different fee ranges from $180 per student to $350 per student. And one district that we found charges $850 maximum per family. So, so I was really anticipating, and this data was kind of shocking to me, that I thought there'd be less communities charging. And I also believe less communities would be transporting everyone. So kind of, I don't know how you feel about that information, but being close to this information, I was really, really surprised. And I guess, so now we have to go back and we have to resurvey and get more information on the districts that charge, just so you know. And we're going to break it down so you'll get a complete list. But where do they fall with similar student population, similar wealth? And I think that information is going to be very helpful to the school committee as you're trying to move forward on the decision. So we got to go back to the drawing board a bit. And that may influence one of our questions around, would you be willing to pay for transportation if we charge? And we may give a range, and we may be looking at the ranges that other districts charge. So... So, so the survey is, was done, and now we think we may have to go back and expand one of the questions. So, and our anticipation is to get that out, hopefully, definitely by the beginning of next week, with the results being completed by Thanksgiving, so we can take a look at that information. That's all I have for the transportation. So we'll work hard on it. Once again, I honestly thought that there'd be one, like three communities that charge, and, and the decision would be a lot easier for you, but it, it isn't.
Not so much.
We're just going to give you the data, and without any facts or anything, or lead you in any way, but certainly we'll, we'll try to present it the best way we can to you, okay?
Certainly. Any questions? I, I am surprised that that many, I'm not surprised that many are transporting the kids, I'm surprised that many are charging, but you wouldn't hear that, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's the ineligible students. Now remember that the state is sixth, grade six and beyond, so a lot of the districts are charging, there's one district, grade sevens to 12, they're charging $350 per student.
Oh, even the kids that live far away?
Yes.
Oh my.
Because by law, we'd only have to transport up through sixth grade, two miles or more.
Again, I, I think it's because of the increasing costs of transportation, of education, that schools are getting creative with fees, you see it with sports fees too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and years ago, we, we did it, but like I say, I don't remember, because I lived far out, and my kids were young, and, you know, it didn't affect us at all.
I wonder if there's any data out there with fees, that does it, does it clean up the car issue, people coming in, dropping off their students, or is it going to increase that issue more too? I don't know if there's going to be any data out there that provides any information whether fees are going to be helpful or, or hurtful.
We're making phone calls, we can certainly ask that.
Yeah.
If it reduces the drops, pickup and drop offs.
Or increases it, yeah.
The only, one of the reasons I like the idea of the fees is it gives you more concrete idea of who's actually going to take the bus, where if you don't have a fee, they don't have to tell you they're not taking the bus, but you have to reserve that seat for them, that's my concern.
Well, we do have families that submitted a transportation form and have not ridden the bus at all yet.
Wasting a seat.
Right. So it's hard to tell.
Just some interesting data, there's one district here that transports every student K to 2, no matter where they live, and then, similar to Lunenburg. If someone is in grades three to four, they have, anyone beyond a mile, five to seven more, a mile and a half, and then eight to 12, they have to be beyond two miles to be eligible, and that's all, that's all free for that. So it's re, redefining who's eligible. In one business manager I spoke to, mentioned that they transport students from across the street. So, you know, that's, that's something that we should, I'm going to, we should probably look at as a, as a group, especially, I mean, on Mass Ave, we do have sidewalks, so I know that was one of the issues, but picking up and transporting students from across the street, I, I don't know how you feel about that.
To add on top of that, I, I think I would love to hear from the DPW director, or someone in that area of like, okay, these are the areas that they'd have concerns about, of students walking on the streets towards either the primary or Turkey Hill.
Yeah. And I don't know, we, I know I'm getting way off track, but, but looking at crosswalks and a crosswalk plan, I don't even know if we, but we can certainly take a look at that, depending on what, what the transportation plan looks like to.
You know, winter can definitely be an issue too with sidewalks, or sidewalks.
Sure.
Yeah, well, I'll speak from my personal experience, I was at Turkey Hill not all that long ago, and I live on Northfield Road, and so like I would just walk around the corner, and like, the amount of times that like I, like my brother and I had to jump out of the way, because like somebody was like going way too fast on that corner and everything, and like, we were literally like, you can see the school, like from my front door, so like it wasn't far at all, but like it's still dangerous, even for sixth, seventh graders, and especially over there, now it's elementary, so they're even younger.
But even not only driving hazards, unfortunately, we don't live in a world that we grew up in, like you see down in Rhode Island, a child getting kidnapped from her bus stop. People are not just saying, hey, I don't want to send my kids walking because the kids are lazy, it's, it's a safety issue nowadays, it's a different world. I know that I will never let my child walk home from the bus, but, so walking down a main road, I don't know if I'd be comfortable. So I guess we'd have to look at that too, of a safety perspective as to what parents are, are willing to risk, because it's, it's just not a safe world, unfortunately.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Sounds good, thank you very much for your research. And now the ESSR update.
So tonight is our first quarterly ESSR update. So we started, this is a new report, a new process, so the way we kind of looked at it was we were looking at some just general COVID responses that the district is doing. Some of the, the topics in here are meeting the requirements of the grant, that's why they're in here. So I've got, we're going to be reporting this out for three years, and I would imagine that topics are going to change from, from report to report, and I think I close this memorandum, which is if, if the committee has any topics that you would like updates on, you know, I, we would love to kind of report out on them as we move forward. So this is, this is a quarterly update. First and foremost, the superintendent created a safety protocol review team, which is part, is, is made up of district stakeholders, nurses, teachers, principals, and they're reviewing protocols within the school, making sure that there's, trying to fine tune safety measures, and possibly even lifting some safety measures. Their first meeting was on September 15th, at that time, there were no changes that were recommended by the committee. Granted, we were only in school for about a two-week period, and they met, they met today, and I didn't get an update, and I don't, there was no update from the committee?
No, but they're, they weren't anticipating changes yet.
So just, just to remind the committee, this group would make recommendations to the superintendent and to the LEA leadership, and, and part of that as well, and just making sure that it meets all safety requirements moving forward. And this is, this is the nitty-gritty classroom work that needs to be done, separating students, opening windows, making sure all that is, is under compliance. This isn't necessarily a mask mandate.
No, any, any change to the universal masking would have to come before this committee for a vote.
So that's not, that's not within the wheelhouse, I just want to let you know that, okay? The next is opening up the, this is, this is a requirement of the grant, which is reviewing the reopening plan, and at, at this time, there are no recommended changes to the in-person learning model, or the out-of-school plan and programming at this time. Part of that is on October 26th, the commissioner of, of education extended the mask mandate to January 15th, 2022. And then part of this memorandum is just, as this is going to be posted on our website in some form or another, just links to some COVID reporting and the Lunenburg dashboard. And the superintendent brought up our COVID numbers at the, at the beginning of the, of the meeting. The test and stay program began on September 29th, with only a few students at that time, and it's located at the Pasture Elementary School, it's in, it's in the wing next to the gravel lot. Students, students with their parents are called the, the day before to report at a specific time, and then they, they pull into the gravel lot, and depending on the, the number of students, they'll come out into the, into the classroom to be swabbed by a nurse, or if there's a, a number of students, the nurse will go out to the, to the, the car. At that point in time, the, this is the, the quick test, the student goes around the corner, and they wait for a text or a phone call from, from the nurse, releasing them back to school. And at that point, the, the school nurse is notified as well, that the student is coming back, has been cleared to return that day. As of the date of this memo, which was on Monday, 86 tests have been administered through the test and stay program, impacting 36 separate students going back to school. Once again, the, this number is, the daily test range is from zero tests to one day we had 16 tests. And these are students that are quarantined, I failed to mention that, due to close contact with their classmate that, that had COVID or COVID symptoms. A staffing update. As of, as of Monday, we have four LPNs assisting our, our school nurses in every single school, so we're very, very lucky we're in that position. They're handling, assisting with, with the COVID response in a school, tracing and notifying, and then just general first aid within the school. As I've mentioned before, the ESSR is going to be supported by the local budget at this time. Certainly that is a cost that might be eligible to, to transfer to an ESSR grant if there's some identified surpluses. Supplies and services, we did a, a large purchase at the end of last school year, springtime, but still, we're going through masks pretty quickly, so we did a significant order of masks, which will carry us pretty much through the year. In addition, we did a, we bought some test and stay signs for, to direct cars into the gravel lot, and then we added a air purifier. I, I, I'm going to divert my conversation about the test and stay program for a second. We had a, the state came in one day this week, and the, their support has been spotty, but the nurse that showed up to assist Katie McGuire this week said that the operation that Katie has set up is superior, for the district, our size, okay? This, this model will probably not work in a big urban district, but the way this is set up, at one location, the, the communication between the nurse at the site to the school, communication to students, is, is one of the best that she's seen. So just kind of a shout-out to her and the work that she's doing, and that's an independent person who thought we were doing a, a very excellent job, so, and it's safe, it's a sa, it's a safe environment down there. So this might need, the next piece might need improvement. So this is, this is our budget. You know, we're on target as far as what we're, we were planning to spend on the first year on our ESSR grant. I may, I may expand this a bit. This is basically an internal control document that we use to monitor our grants, and I just, I just added the, the expenses to it and just created a new account. I want to remind the school committee, some of the positions that were being funded out of ESSR II and III for this year only. And it's a math teacher at, at the high school, a social worker at the middle school, some stipends, the after-school program, which we had mentioned earlier, we have two part-time technicians, IT technicians, that are there to support equipment and, and teachers in classrooms, and that's for ESSR II. ESSR III, we have guidance counselors at the middle and high school, intervention specialists at Turkey Hill, a social worker at, at Turkey Hill. Tutors. We have four, we've hired four tutors to, the primary, to our Turkey Hill. All four are part-time, no benefits to that. We do have a small supply budget, and then we've got fringe, meaning for our retirement contribution and insurance for the, the employees who are taking it. So those are the, those are the expenses, expenses that are on this list. Finally, I think it's, it's important to include this in the report tonight, which was the Massachusetts COVID Temporary Emergency Paid Sick Leave. This was a law that was enacted by Governor Baker in April, it was set to expire in September, he expended it until March 31st, 2022. It gives employees up to 40 hours of sick leave with a maximum amount of $850 per employee. We have been utilizing this, this is eligible for the, for the town to get reimbursed by the state, so they're collecting the data, they may get some revenues from this, so. So this is our, this is the first ESSR report, it's going to get better. I think it's going to get more clear. You know, this will be available to the state, they may offer some additional information. We'll seek out other districts to see what they're providing their school committees as well, and maybe offer that as we move forward too. So this is just a report of progress for the committee to consider, and once again, any feedback on any additional topics, would, would really appreciate that, maybe not tonight, but moving forward.
All right then, are there any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Mr. Layton?
So I always have concerns with grants, that, oh, what happens if we don't spend it, and money goes, and we don't, we don't get to use it. I see that you have the budgeted line item, the total, is there items, wish lists that we have, just in case if one of these line items doesn't happen, that we can put that money somewhere else that we have as a backup, so we can spend that full grant money?
Absolutely. ESSR II, if the, the funding isn't spent, we can shift ESSER 2, if the funding isn't spent, we can shift the expenses of the LPNs to the grant. We can amend that. It's a little, for me, as a business manager looking at this, it is a little early to really project some of those surplus funds. Probably another month or so. When everyone is hitting the right account, I'm going to be able to do some projections on those accounts. And get a better feel of, especially if you look at like the tutors and our technology, they're part-timers. So sometimes, especially the technology staff, if there's no work that week or they're not going to be working Christmas week. So there's going to be some fluctuations in the number of hours that they're going to be working. So I've got to kind of catch that and project that moving forward. But any surplus, we can move some of the local expenses against the grant.
Thank you.
So Mr. Cassidy, when I look at this table and I think, well, two months of school is basically done, but there's not two months' worth of expenses showing. So you anticipate that what's in here will be expended by the end of this?
Yes. Now remember, there are different timelines too.
That was my other thing. It says FY '22, but some of these go into FY '23?
Yes.
Okay.
And '24.
Okay. So that's why it's not exponentially, I can't divide it by the months of school and figure. That's because I'm looking and I'm saying, hmm, there's not a lot spent, but that would be why. Okay.
I'll work on that. It's a little bit different than the quarterly report that I do in the local budget. So where that starts on July 1, we start hitting expenses on July 1. This was basically on September 1.
Sure.
So. And that money, and this money, once again, it just kind of carries over into next fiscal year. So there's kind of a drag on that.
And I don't know if it made sense to have like a budgeted and then a projected and then a total? I don't know if it makes sense to add another column of, okay, this is where we are compared to where we thought we were going to be?
Well, I think, just to be transparent on these grants, especially being transparent to the public, amending any of these budgets would probably, I would be proposing those to the school committee.
Sure.
You know, some of our, if I may say, if we go into, for an amendment for our special ed grant, that doesn't come to the school committee. We're just shifting money. There's so much accountability to this. Shifting money without, just, I guess, approval and acknowledgement of why we're doing it is needed. Especially the process that we went through to present this.
Sure.
So that's part of, that's going to be a little bit different than the way we do things too. So, once again, I'll be here. I'll be here for three years, we're putting out quarterly for this money. So you'll see the gradual changes and the expenses go up.
All right.
And if I'm alarmed that we're not going to spend it, I'll certainly, I'll bring it up at that point.
I just wanted to say, just to echo what Mr. Cassidy said earlier, to thank Katie McGuire for taking this task on for the Test and Stay because I'm sure it wasn't easy for her to take on yet another responsibility, especially with no, well, lacking of the support of the state that we were promised. And I just really wanted to thank her for, and recognize her for the work she's been doing.
Agreed.
We're very fortunate to have her.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now we have an action item, the third read of Policy 5204, Promotion and Retention of Students. So because it is the third read, we need to read it.
Students in Instruction 5000, Instructional Program 5200, Promotion and Retention of Students 5204. Graduation Requirement. Prior to graduation, each student must meet the competency requirements imposed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The following requirements are understood as having to be successfully completed, passing grades, in order for the diploma to be granted at Lunenburg High School. English, four credits. Social Sciences, three credits. Where US History 1, US History 2, and World History are required. Science, three credits. Two credits must include a lab. Mathematics, three credits. Students are required to take math for four years. However, they are required to pass Algebra 1 and 2 and Geometry. Foreign Language, two credits. Where two consecutive years of one foreign language are required. Physical Education, one and a half credits. Unified Arts, two credits. Health Education, half a credit. Electives, five credits. Civics Project. Where the requirement can be met by successful completion of specific social sciences or English courses slash electives. A student who has met graduation requirements is not eligible to enroll for a voluntary fifth year. Students who fall short of the credit requirement by two credits or less would be required to attend summer school for credit recovery. Students who fall short of the credit requirement in excess of two credits would be allowed to enroll as a full-time student for a fifth year or attend summer school for credit recovery. Approved September 7, 1994. Revised December 2, 2004. Updated and approved May 3, 2017. Updated and approved January 20, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this policy? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 5204 as read today.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Now we are on to public comment, open to any item under the scope of authority of the school committee. Any public comment? Seeing none? Then we will continue on to committee reports. Athletic Advisory?
We plan to meet Monday, the 15th.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee? We held our joint meeting, of course, with the Finance Committee on the 28th, which was a discussion of Chapter 70 with MASC Field Director Tracy Novick. I thought it was a very productive meeting. Learned a lot of new information and left almost understanding how it works. So I thought that was pretty good. We, the Finance Committee is revisiting this topic on December 9 with hopefully some of our state representatives. And the Finance Committee also is preparing for the special town meeting with a public hearing on the TC Passios items on the warrant on Thursday night. PTO?
We have not met since our last meeting. The next meeting is Monday, November 8, in the Middle School Project Room.
And the Primary School Council?
We have not met.
The Turkey Hill School Council?
Turkey Hill advisory was held on October 21. We spoke about the PBIS and the data to date for discipline referrals. Mr. Murphy has been a wonderful help with providing different options for the shade structure. 2019 is the most recent data we have regarding views of climate and learning. And at that time, we fell along the state average. DESI Model Student Survey was distributed by the SEL teachers last week, where the survey questions ranged from getting students feelings on being safe and comfortable in school, students feeling as though they have a voice, and students feeling like they are respected in school. The plan is to distribute it last week and review the results and then also distribute it again in the spring and compare the two. Mrs. Champagne took a professional development class on gender diversity and realized there is an opportunity to increase awareness and inclusion in Turkey Hill. So they are going to look at ways to better educate staff and students in gender diversity and inclusion. The next meeting is November 18.
Thank you very much. The Middle School Advisory, it appears I will contact the middle school and I'll step in in that position while we are searching for another member of the school committee, as that was Mr. Kelly's role. And the high school?
We have not met since our last meeting.
All right. Capital Planning?
So we've been busy, meeting every Tuesday. So the last meeting since our school committee meeting was October 26. So now we're meeting with department heads to review what they've submitted for their capital planning. So on October 26, we combined the land use director with the fire department. They were two smaller of the capital planning submissions. So we met with Adam Burney, the land use director. The focus was really on the master plan. So they had already planned to work on the master plan, but only two elements. And there was $43,000 that was already put forward to that, but they got zero bids. So the concern was they were asking too much for too little, from what they had heard. So what they did was they combined all of the elements and they want to put that into the capital plan. It's around the $150,000 cost. But the idea would be you can get more bang for your buck. Whoever's working on the capital plan can get all that work together. It's basically a 12 to 18-month process covering the master plan. And the master plan is basically a living document for the town. And it's required by law to have one. And it's been like 18 to, let's see, about 20 years since it's been updated. So it's been a while. Yeah, 19 years old. And then with the fire department, they had nothing on this year, so that was good news. But they did update us on the fleet. They have 11 vehicles in their fleet and we'll see those later on in the capital plan. We talked a little bit about some of the equipment, that they had updated some of their budget items in their budget, that they were falling behind. But because of the updates, then they were back up to par with the increases in equipment costs. So now that's incorporated into their budget. Then we met with the school committee at our last meeting on the 2nd, November 2, with Dr. Burnham and John Murphy. Some of the items that came up was, the first one was the air conditioning at the primary, which is I think a heated topic or a topic where people are on opposite sides often. So there are a lot of questions about that. A lot of concerns about the health and safety of the students and the staff. It came up how the building was actually built, but as a cost savings, they didn't actually put in that air conditioning. Where you look at, we had the discussion of how the middle high school, they actually do have that kind of system in the building. The Superintendent had mentioned the air quality. This concerns about just reducing the humidity on hot days in, say, September and hot days in June. And that we actually do have systems in place, but they're really more temporary. You have AC units and potentially windows. There's seven units, the whole school is not having those kind of units. So that's the concern, that we need that full school unit to take care of that. Right now, there's seven installed, 20,000 BTU units that they're using. But again, there's still concerns over that. And it is a temp control thing and humidity and the wellness of the students. There was some discrepancy over the engineering of the costs for whether they should have a separate panel or can the school actually take care of it? And John Laund had said before at one of our meetings that they believe that they can do it on the electrical panel that exists. We also talked about a plow vehicle that needs updating. Oh, also with that too, Turkey Hill also has the same kind of concerns with the air quality and the humidity. Also talked about a mower. And then Turkey Hill was brought up about, really in the future, we're going to have to be making a decision on whether we're doing renovation, extensive renovations on the building or a full replacement of the building. In the capital plan, the roof was involved in 2026. MSBA was brought up as well, and that's something we should also be thinking about too as projects. There's a 10-year commitment once you do a project. So if you were to do the roof, say, of Turkey Hill, now you're committed 10 years of having that as an educational building. So we can't convert it to a different building if we don't want to make those additional renovations that are needed, like HVAC windows that are also on the capital plan. And that the school is looking at MSBA data for that potential full replacement too. And that's what we've used for the projected costs. I think that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. The Wellness Advisory Committee?
We have not met yet this year.
Okay. And PACSEL?
We have not met, we are meeting on November 18.
And the TC Passios Elementary School?
Yes, so yeah, some exciting stuff. So we met tonight, I had to leave early. But we did get information back from the architect. And if you watched the select board last night, you also got some information there. So the new building estimate came back from the architect at over $39 million, just shy of $40 million for a new build, for a tear-down, a new build. So as you are all shocked, so was the committee. When speaking with the architect, our chair had stated that obviously this cost was much higher than we expected. I think a lot of people were thinking that the cost was going to be close to a renovation. And that was one of the reasons why the town spent that money. So we would be, because the renovation cost was so high per square foot, the assumption was that a new build, and even the architect had thought that a new build, tear-down could be comparable at that kind of cost. So the town had spent that money to do that research. So then there was the concern of, okay, if this is such a high inflated cost, are renovation costs now, do we have to be concerned about those? And the architect said yes, so they did review those numbers. So the prior cost estimate from February 2020, when we had that done, was the just over $22 million cost. Now the October renovation estimate, based off of looking at the numbers, the current numbers of the market, the inflation on costs, the high costs of steel and concrete, et cetera. Now the cost is looking at about $28.9, so about $29 million. So going from that $23 million to about $29 million now. So it is shocking. So the discussion took place of what we want to do with the current articles. We still want to have that update article. But we didn't decide on whether we would pass over the articles or whether we keep the articles and continue with informing the town that this is the numbers. This concerns of still, the numbers could get higher. We don't know if the numbers could go lower. And there's concern that people in the town want to make a decision on this property, as well as other properties and what they want to do with these buildings. And a part of the town meeting, Mr. Jeffries, who's on our committee but also a select board member, he has a presentation as well describing the facilities, the town facilities and the disrepair that they're in. Kind of a combination of what we're doing at the TCP. So I'd highly recommend people going to the town meeting, the Fall Town Meeting, to hear the presentations, hopefully. And we'll see what happens.
Well, thank goodness the number came in at least a week ahead, you know, so that people can wrap their heads around it a little bit than at the last minute. Almost the last minute, but not quite the last minute. Wow, thank you. Topics for future discussions?
So from capital planning, it made me think of like Turkey Hill. And it doesn't have to be next meeting, but I feel like we do want to have that on a future agenda of discussion and possibly a direction that we want to go, whether it's a renovation or a new build.
I would agree, it needs to be, we need to figure out. I know that it's hard to figure out because the projections or whatever, if we do the Passios building, you know, the thought was the other one would follow after. But if this is going to hang on for years and years and years trying to figure out what to do again, what to do again, we can't keep putting off past that roof repair date.
I think it's a discussion of what we want to do
I think we need to figure it out, yeah.
and also timeline of what we want to do.
Yeah. It needs to be talked about. I agree. Anything else? All right, then. Seeing nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:31 PM.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.